All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The City Council is reconvening from closed session and to report. By a vote of five-zero, the City Council authorized the City Attorney's Office to initiate litigation in one matter. The name of the defendants and details are not subject to disclosure at this time. Once litigation is filed, this information will be disclosed to any person upon inquiry. I want to adjourn the special meeting at six-thirty-six, and we're called to order the regular City Council meeting on Wednesday, October the ninth, at six-thirty-six P.M. Mr. Clerk, if you could read the Metro replay.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel fourteen on Friday, October eleventh, at one P.M., and Saturday, October twelfth, at six P.M. It is being closed captioned; it will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting. Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person, so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number twenty-ten-two-four, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address this City Council for more than three minutes. Speaker timer on the podium counts down the individual speaker time remaining; it will turn yellow after the first two minutes have passed, indicating one minute remains to summarize comments. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the room, and provide it to the Assistant City Clerk prior to consideration of the Agenda item. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, roll call, please.
For the roll call, Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Detrick.
Here.
Councilmember Sun.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hume.
Here.
And Mayor Lee.
Here. And next item is Pledge of Legions. Since this is a special month for code enforcement, I'd like to invite a leader from one of the code enforcement team to come on up and lead us in pledge. Take a volunteer. Go ahead.
(inaudible)
Thank you. And at the beginning of every regular City Council meeting, the Council would like to invite members of the public to join us in a moment of silence.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
With these heavy winds that are coming through, and, you know, eight-hundred thousand people that are going to be out of power, and all of our public safety folks, you know, keep those in consideration during your moment of silence for all, everybody.
Thank you, Councilman. All right. Join us, please. Thank you very much. Next item.
Take us to Section Two, Approval of the Agenda.
Hey, we have an agenda.
A move.
Sir, motion second. And, all in favor? Aye. Pose abstention. Next item.
We have no items under Section Three of the Closed Session, which will take us to Section Four, our Presentations and Announcements, starting with Item four-point-one, which is a proclamation declaring October 2019 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And I would invite, I believe in the audience, Amanda Nelson, Executive Director of All Be Aware, Breast Cancer Foundation, to meet our Councilmember Representative up at the speaker podium.
So, this is, October, we declare as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and, you know, all of us here in this room know at least, at least one woman who have been affected, and probably lost her life to breast cancer. And I can tell you, I know several. And so, this truly affects me and my family, but more so than anything, as a woman, and as a woman of color, we don't necessarily look at getting our breasts examined. And so, more and more organizations, right, or foundations are educating us about how important it is in early detection is. And so, while we chose October to be, or while we've all recognized October to be Breast Cancer Awareness Month, it should really be celebrated and acknowledged every single month. But I am really honored to be able to present this on behalf of the City of Elk Grove, that we are going to declare October 2019, and present this proclamation as Breast Cancer Awareness Month.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Thank you so, so much. I'm really honored to accept this.
Take a picture. Oh. Take a picture real quick. There we go. All right.
Okay. I'm so honored to accept this on behalf of All Be Aware Breast Cancer Foundation. You were just talking about who All Be Aware is and what we do. All of our services are local. We provide services to women, and actually some men, in all of, in Sacramento region and beyond. And I just am so pleased to be able to come up to Elk Grove and receive this and feel the support that I get in this community. I really appreciate it. So, on behalf of All Be Aware, thank you all very, very much for your support.
All right, next item.
That'd be Item four-point-two, proclamation declaring October 2019 as Disability Awareness Month. And again, as our Councilmember comes down, if I can ask members of the Disability Advisory Committee and other representatives to meet them up at the speaker podium.
How you doing, Steve?
Good.
Good. So, the good news is, we'll only have you walk up here once for both items.
I'll take you up on that.
Okay. So, we have a proclamation here declaring October 2019 as Disability Awareness Month. I won't go through all the wherethes, but I'll just skip down to the bottom one. Whereas, the goals of this city include providing individuals with disabilities the opportunities and support to make informed choices and decisions, live in homes and communities where they can exercise their full rights and responsibilities as citizens, pursue meaningful and productive lives, contribute to their family, community, state, and nation, and achieve full inclusion in society. Now therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2019 as Disability Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and asks the community to join in honoring individuals with disabilities. And so, I present that to you. Thank you. And, going along with that, even though we up here at the podium are blessed with our ability of sight, we also want to proclaim White Kane Safety Day, October fifteenth, 2019, and note that that also includes guide dogs, which are very instrumental tools for those with, without the ability of sight to be able to get around. And again, I will just skip down and say that, therefore be it resolved, the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October fifteenth, 2019, as White Kane Safety Day in the City of Elk Grove for the purpose of bringing a greater understanding of blindness and what it means to be blind to the citizens of Elk Grove, and call upon our schools to offer full opportunities for training to blind persons, public and private employers to utilize the available skills of competent blind persons, and to open new opportunities for the blind in our rapidly changing society, and all citizens to recognize the white cane and guide dog as instruments of safety and self-help for blind pedestrians on our streets and highways. And so, it's just important that when we see those tools that are helping these people gain mobility, that we take a little extra caution and care to allow them to go about their day of life. So, appreciate all that you do, and everything that you're doing to bring these awarenesses and serve the City of Elk Grove. And if you'd like to make some comments, I would offer up that opportunity to you.
I just want to say thank you, and I feel fortunate to live in Elk Grove, because I feel I can get a lot of support here, especially from you guys and the whole community, the police officers. Anyway, that's brief.
We like brevity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just also like to thank Jim Ramsey for everything he does with the DAC and all of his work as well.
Okay, thank you. Next item.
I'll take us on to Item four-point-four, which is a proclamation declaring October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And I believe we have representatives from both the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center and with WEVE. If I could ask you to come forth to the podium and meet our Councilmember.
Hello, Beth.
Hi, how are you?
Nice to meet you. Well, you know, two fantastic organizations. Domestic violence is the most frequent violent crime in our city and most cities in the nation. It's the single largest cause of injury to women, affects people of all ages, racial, socioeconomic, educational, religious, and occupational segments of our society. And both of your organizations do such great work. I'm very glad to see you both, both here tonight. Briefly, I'm going to start with the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center. I had the opportunity to attend your Hundred Men Strong on the doorsteps of the Memorial Auditorium, and I heard a very touching and compelling tragic story from firefighter Joe Hunter about his sister. It's just, it's a reminder of how important this issue is, and if you'll allow me just to give you both a little bit of personal highlights. The Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center Collaborative provides victims and their families with a one-stop center to report a crime, provide a complete statement taken by a detective or a trained child interviewer, get assistance to obtain temporary restraining order, find safe housing, meet with a legal advocate or victim advocate to learn what will happen in court, and most importantly, find the support they need to keep them safe from falling back into the hands of the accused. And then, for our partners here at WEVE, Beth and her organization, we are very fortunate to have partnered with WEVE and our police department. Having one of your surface workers here on hand greatly helps the field calls that we take on occasion, and I will owe. Whereas WEVE is the oldest and most comprehensive provider of domestic violence services in the Sacramento County. An annual response to more than twelve-thousand-five-hundred crisis line calls, provides more than twenty-six-thousand bed nights of confidential shelter to more than three-hundred adults and children, provides immediate crisis intervention to more than twelve-hundred individuals, provides legal representation to more than two-hundred men and women, provides counseling to over fifteen-hundred survivors, and uniquely partners with the Elk Grove Police Department, as I mentioned, and vetting an advocate in the department to team up in the investigation of domestic violence calls. So, I'll just say, whereas our goal of Domestic Violence Awareness Month is to raise awareness of the serious epidemic, support victims and survivors, recognize the community, leaders, police judges, healthcare workers, and advocates are working on a solution, now therefore be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Elk Grove, and urges working towards a coordinated community effort for citizens to learn about preventing domestic violence, and to support the numerous organizations and individuals who provide critical advocacy services and assistance to our victims. And thank you both so much for your work, and if you'd like to address some.
Sure.
Oh, would you want to take a quick picture first?
Let me hand these out.
You, Beth, yes. There you go. All right, thank you both.
One, two, three.
Thank you so much. I just want to say that everyone at WEVE is so proud of our partnership with the City of Elk Grove, and the citizens of Elk Grove should be really proud to have leadership that values the partnership between nonprofits such as WEVE and your police department to make sure that people are safe in their homes, and in their, in the streets, and, and anywhere they travel around Elk Grove. So, thank you so much for your continued support and recognition. Appreciate it.
And I too want to thank you on behalf of the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center for your support of the Family Justice Center. We've built some really great partnerships out here, in particular with law enforcement. WEVE is also a great partner of ours, and we just, I just personally, I'm a survivor of domestic violence, so I just want to personally thank you for promoting awareness on this really severe public health issue. Thank you, and have a nice night.
Thank you. All right, next item.
Take us to Item four-point-five, which is a proclamation recognizing Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, which started October sixth and will run through October twelfth, 2019. Come on up, code enforcement.
I think I said, uh...
Go, go, go. Yeah. I think I said, uh, Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Month, because I really wanted to have a whole month of appreciation for all of you. But, you know, thank you. On behalf of the City Council, on behalf of the city, we really do appreciate the work that all of you do. We have here a proclamation from the City Council, and it reads as such. Code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of residents, visitors, businesses, and city of Elk Grove through enforcement of local and state law addressing building safety, zoning, housing, environment protection. Light and code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles in maintaining a high quality of life, having a highly visible role in the city of Elk Grove and regularly interacting with public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials. And code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through the application of housing, zoning, and building and, and laws. The City of Elk Grove recognizes and honors the code enforcement officers that serve our community, and acknowledges their role in leading the way to continue the high quality of life we enjoy in our city. Now therefore, therefore be it resolved, that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby proclaims the second week of October 2019 as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week, and encourages residents in the city and businesses to join in giving the utmost esteem and respect to the work, dedication, and commitment of these fine individuals. Thank you so much for your work. I appreciate it.
I'd like to take an opportunity to introduce the team to you guys, because I think this is most of their first time here, so if I could have you guys, um, let's see, we'll start with our newest code officer, Carleen Kirkpatrick. She's been part of our team since August of 2019. And then, we've got Jeff Wyler. He's been with the city since 2005, and he's been a code enforcement officer for the last five years. We've got Officer Eric Pennington. He's also been with the city since 2005. He's been a code enforcement officer for the last twelve years. We've got Officer Kathy Lanzberger. She's been with the city also since 2005, and she's been a code officer for the last five years. Anna Solis. She has been with the city since 2006, and she's been a code officer for the last ten years. And I'd like to say a few words. Code enforcement's mission is to maintain the highest quality of life possible for our community members. This happens through the hard work and dedication of this group of individuals before you this evening. I cannot be more proud of this team here before you this evening. They are the best we as a community can have. Their hard work, dedication, and commitment is demonstrated through the work that they do. This last year, code enforcement addressed close to three-thousand concerns from the public. Out of those three-thousand concerns, ninety-five percent of them were resolved through education and voluntary compliance. This level of compliance demonstrates their commitment to partner with our community. As I mentioned before, I cannot be more proud. They are the best we can have, and I'd like to invite everyone to give the, find this, excuse me, I'd like to give, I'd like to invite everyone to give this fine group of code enforcement officers a round of applause for their hard work and commitment in maintaining the highest quality of life within our community.
Thank you all for your work. I just want to say, we get a lot of calls, all of us up here, and you guys do a great job in handling them. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. Next item.
Take us to Section Five, Public Comment. Members of the audience may comment on any item not on the agenda that is of interest to the public and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council. Each person will be allowed three minutes or less for a large number of requests to receive on a particular subject. City Council cannot take action on non-agendized items raised under public comment until the matter's been specifically included on an agenda as an action item. Members of the public desiring a response to a specific question are encouraged to contact any member of the Council, the city manager, at any time. Those audience members who wish to address a specific agendized item are encouraged to offer their public comments during consideration of that item.
Okay, we have one speaker sign up to speak. Mr. Mark Graham, come on up. Mr. Mark Graham, you're not here. There he is. Come on up.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mark Graham. It's often warmer in here in December and January than it is in July and August. I don't like to be frozen out of here. You might want to start your closed-session meetings a half an hour earlier, because apparently starting at five o'clock is not early enough, is it? All right, we want to talk about the cell antenna ordinance. The city knows that the FCC order from last September has been challenged by a lot of cities and municipal leagues all across the country, and built into what you approved on August twenty-eighth is something that accounts for the possibility that the Court of Appeals will overturn that FCC order either completely or partly, and that's the section about fees. It's something like the fees for an annual rent for a cell antenna are $270, but if the FCC over, orders overturned, then it could be 500, whatever it is. So, you've accounted for that possibility in the area of fees, but you've not accounted for it in, in other areas, such as the shot clock, such as the significant gap in coverage, and I couldn't even name all the other ways in which the FCC order will tie the city's hands. But you do know that's what it's all about, right? Because I've told you that for a long time. So, what I think you should have done, and what you should do now, is rewrite, whether it's the Master License Agreement or the code, or both, to say that, in the event that the FCC order is overturned, either completely or partly, by the U.S. Court of Appeals for the Ninth Circuit, this is what it will say. And you'll be able to do that, because the powers that the city has always had, according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, which are limited since just last September, well, it's like your powers will be restored. You're the superhero, and you're supposed to protect all of us. Well, your powers will be restored if and when the Court of Appeals overturns that FCC order. Does that make sense? I explained this to the Planning Commission and went in one ear and out the other. I don't know if I ever talked to you about this specifically, so that's one thing you ought to do. Another thing is, application content requirements. There are a grand total of two paragraphs in the code amendment that you approved for application content requirements, and it just looks like you guys didn't do your homework, ladies and lady and gentlemen. The application content requirements are there to protect the interests of the city. And I sent you around August twenty-second, this fine collection of examples, actual examples that I copied and pasted from the zoning codes of other cities, and also the, what I was recommending. I recommended, and I'm still recommending, three pages of application content requirements, and when you read each one, you'll find out its purpose. But, for example, the City of Glendora, seven pages long of application content requirements. The City of Mill Valley, I think it's three pages long. I had all this written down. San Diego County also requires two or three pages of application content requirements, and finally, Sonoma City. And those are just, you know, some that I looked at. You should put this stuff in the code. It should have been there in the first place, and it's to protect the interests of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. All right, seeing that there are no additional speaker, let's move to the next item.
Take us to Section Six, General Administration Information.
Good evening, members of the City Council. I want to remind everyone that we have our Elk Grove Animal Shelter Grand Opening coming up this Saturday. The city's going to host a grand opening celebration at eleven o'clock, brief ribbon-cutting ceremony. There's going to be hot dogs and food for members of the public, as well as tours, and opportunities to bring home your next family friend. Our fine chief Albright over there is modeling our, our pink patches, which are displayed on all of our officers and non-sworn personnel with, either through the lapel pins or through the pink patches in honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Pink patches are available to the public at our PD Service Counter right out here, and for the cost of a $10 donation. All the don, all the proceeds will go directly to All Be Aware to support the fight against breast, breast cancer. For the month of October, you'll also see purple ribbons will be displaced, placed on police department patrol vehicles for Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Our Family Services Unit is heading up the month, this month's awareness campaign, along with the purple ribbon placards on the patrol vehicles. Signs have been placed on all E-Trans buses, and messaging will appear on the Auto Mount billboard as well. Police Department will also host a Cone with the Cop event next Wednesday, October sixteenth, from four to six P.M. at McDonald's on Elk Grove Boulevard. This is a time for casual conversation with the community while enjoying some McDonald's ice cream. Details are available on the police department's web, Facebook page. Police Department announced the launch of the, their Unmanned Aircraft System program this week, and there's a presentation a couple of months ago, talking about what that was going to look, look like. This new resource will assist our officers during critical incidents and crimes in progress. More information on the program, including their flight log, is available on the PD website. Staff was notified on September thirtieth that the city will receive a $3 million grant for the Nature Area Project from the California State Parks. This is in our, at our District Fifty-Six, the southern portion of the District Fifty-Six property. It's part of the Land and Water Conservation Fund. The city also received notification that we'll receive a $30,000 grant from the National Fitness Campaign for a fitness area also located in the northern section of that property. Staff plans on returning to the council with options for funding that project, as well as phasing options. We expect to be back to the city council later this year. Let's see, we also have a number of capital improvement projects that are underway. I want to bring to your attention, Public Works, the process of completing the curb, citywide curb ramp upgrades, pavement repairs and resurfacing, storm rain improvements throughout the Camden area. A new traffic signal was added at Brewsville Road and Poppy Ridge Quail Run in September. Pavement improvements are scheduled to begin on Bond Road this month, with additional median, signal, pedestrian improvements, and final pavement resurfacing work to be completed next spring. Also, the Lower Laguna Creek Open Space Preserve Trail officially opened in time for Walk to School Day on October second. Check out the city's Facebook page for a post with video along the trail. And finally, good news to report, the city, every three years, the FTA conducts an extensive review of the city's administration of its federally funded transit service operations and capital purchases. This year, the FTA's triennial review covered twenty-one different areas of compliance over a time period spanning from the last audit in 2016 to the present day. As, and onsite review inspection of the city's administrative records, transit operations occurred in September, concluding their review, the FTA found zero deficiencies in the city's administration and operation of transit, which will be reflected in the FTA's first triennial review report expected to arrive the end of October. This is a very rare and significant accomplishment. Please join me in extending appreciation to our Transit Assistant Manager, Mike Costa, the Fleet and Facilities Manager, Doug Scott, Senior Transit Administrative Assistant, Zara Carter-Alvarado, and Senior Accountant, Eric Swenson, for a successful FTA triennial review. And I'm happy to answer any questions that the council might have. Any questions? There are no questions? Thank you. Good job. All right, let's see, for reports, start with Councilmember Detrick.
Hey, Mayor, just real quick, keep it short. Went to the Giant Pumpkin Festival, talking with CSD. It was surpassed by any past, over the last twenty-five years in attendance, phenomenal. Great event, as always. Went to the Mazda re-grand opening. They re, kind of rebranding themselves. A beautiful facility that John and Christine Dreeby put together there. Went to the Rotary Beef and Reef out at Lent Ranch. Great, great event, fundraising for Rotary, for all the good that they do. Went to the Elk Grove FFA event last Saturday night, and another big fundraiser at Lent Ranch that supports the youth of our community. And that's it for now.
Okay, thank you, Councilman Detrick. Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, sir. I just wanted to remind folks that my seed grant is due this Friday. Anybody interested in $500, community-based organization groups, youth group, that can use $500 for a short-term project, please submit them by noon on Friday. If you need the link to apply, please email me. I'd be more than happy to get it over to you. It's just one question, and the question is, what can you and your group or organization do to improve our city? Thank you, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Sun.
Thank you, Mayor. Also attended the Pumpkin Festival. I had the joy of attending Walk to School Day with my son and his friends at Joseph Sims Elementary. As I mentioned earlier, attended the Hundred Men Strong at the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, the Memorial Auditorium, and I want to thank Captain Albright and Elk Grove PD for, for being there and sponsors of that event as well. We had a SECOG Policy and Committee, Innovation Committee meeting, where we talked about the, the Presidential Administration's new safe rule that, that affects from the EPA, and, and it affects our ability to, could affect our ability to have transportation funding into the future, so that's a big deal, and how we're going to strategize around that. and how we're going to strategize around that. Also talked about our state and federal legislative policies to advocate for the six-county, 22-city region, and then objectives on addressing housing, affordable housing, and regional mobility within the region. Tomorrow, we have the Sacramento Transportation Authority meeting, and then Library Authority is canceled for tomorrow. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Had a RT meeting Monday evening and a sanitation district meeting this morning. Nothing to report from either.
Thank you, sir. The only thing I'd like to highlight is yesterday evening, we had an opportunity to hold a kind of light vigil, and I want to take this opportunity to thank the city manager and also the chief for working really hard with Diversity and Inclusion Commissioner Rendawwa, who really felt that this was an opportunity for us to acknowledge law enforcement and their dedication. In particular, this officer is of the Sikh religion, and the Sikh community came out, both Councilmember Sun and also Huen came out to support, and a number of other members from different jurisdictions, I think all the way down to Modesto. And so it was very well attended. I want to say roughly about 400 or 500 people, it seemed like that. The whole parking lot was filled. And it's, you know, certainly to pay respect and to remember Deputy Sandeep, who gave it all. And I think these are the moments in which we can bring the community together by remembering somebody who dedicated his life to service. So thank you, Chief, for your hard work and for bringing our own officers out and having them where the turban, Sikh turban was connected with the residents. And many of them expressed how grateful they are to have a police department and a city that supports, you know, the community. So that's pretty much it. All right, next item.
Take us to Section Eight, Consent Calendar Items.
Okay, I want to open public comment. I have a few members of the public sign up to speak. First is Lynn Wheat.
I'm going to speak on 8.5 and then on, what's the second? 8.10. So on 8.5, I appreciate that we want to keep moving forward with our Public Works projects and our developments. I'd like to suggest, since there was a lawsuit, of which I'm not privy to all the details other than one of our small businesses that's involved in that suit, and it's costing that business and family and our employees in the area, I'd like to suggest in this next year that we look like, we look at as a city, an RFP, and go out and get somebody other than Welldan to provide those type of services. On 8.10, because I see I have very little time, I won't go into the details of the finances beyond, behind this deal in creating economic incentives and bringing money to our city, but I hope that you will closely look at that because sometimes I think that this is like giving away of public funds. But let me first read this to you, and lastly. First, we were the sports mecca, then the medical mecca, then we were the circuit board mecca, then we were the tortilla mecca, and now we are the beer and entertainment mecca. While you are approving spending taxpayer dollars on property purchases and business incentives, our traffic increases and road maintenance is 2 million in the hole. What exactly is the policy? Our city's economic development policy appears to be using the shotgun approach, shooting at everything we can think of. Well, the bullets are getting mighty expensive. We are beginning to look like Elmer Fudd on a hunting trip.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Cathy Engel.
I want to speak on 8.2 along the same lines as what Lynn said, that the Economic Development Department, I tried to look at Claggett Wolf &amp; Associates, and I'm not sure if this is for, but their website isn't working, so that's always a bad sign. So maybe somebody can, you know, find out what they are and who they are and if they have a working website. Also, 8.5, with respect to Wildon, I think it is the same issue that Lynn brought up, that while there are so many issues, while there's a lawsuit, and I see, I wasn't able to be here because I have a broken foot, so I wasn't able to be here the last time to talk about all of the spending with Wildon, but there's several million dollars that was in the last checkbook register alone, and there's also a lot of donations going to some people, and that doesn't, I'm not inferring anything, insinuating anything, it's just that, just to avoid even the appearance of impropriety while there's all these lawsuits going on. There's, let's see, there's, we were billed for Chronic 5281 for the Aquatic Center, and then another 4276, that was just on the last register. So there were also accumulating attorney's fees, and as a taxpayer, I'd rather see it go to something fun, like the entertainment mecca. I like the sound of that. And that's, I think, all I have right now. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, we want to close public comment. I'll entertain a motion, or the consent calendar. Got a motion second, all in favor? I oppose extension. Next item.
Take us on to Section Nine, our public hearings, and that one public hearing is a public hearing to receive input regarding the content of draft maps for transitioning to by-district city council member elections. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. I'm Jason Lindgren, your city clerk. I've been talking enough for the last two public hearings on this issue, and so I'm going to be handing over the reins to Shalise Tilton with National Demographics Corporation, who will be able to pull up a presentation and take it from here. The last two public hearings that we've had on this was just discussions about the composition of districts, and now we're moving into looking at kind of the map figures that are out here, and I'll let Shalise take it from here.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. It's my pleasure to be here representing National Demographics Corporation. Before I get started into the presentation, just for, especially for purposes of those who are just starting to follow this process, I just want to quickly explain that our role as National Demographics Corporation is to assist the city in transitioning from a from-district system to a by-district system. So the difference is from-district, now the council members live within that district, but everyone within the city boundaries votes for that council member. So a by-district system would require that the council member, again, live in the districts, but only those voters in the district vote. This process is largely driven by the California Voting Rights Act. It's actually a very short act. If anyone wants to read it, it's in Election Code 14025. You'll be hearing us often refer to it as CVRA, and you'll see it in print often as CVRA. So I explained what an at-large system is, and the California Voting Rights Act states that an at-large system could be in violation if it prevents a protected class group from influencing an election or electing candidates of their choice. So in this case, we're talking a protected class group, we're talking language minority-based groups, mostly Latino and your Asian-American population. We do have some African-American protected-class neighborhoods, but not significant numbers, as well as Native American, which we'll be talking about as we're going through the process. So in determining if there is a violation of the California Voting Rights Act, they determine if there's racially polarized voting. So racially polarized voting means there's a difference in the choice of the protected class group and the rest of the electorate. So if there's a difference in the preference of the protected class group for a particular candidate or on a particular election issue that is different than the majority. NDC was hired by the city attorney in spring of 2018 to conduct an analysis to determine if racially polarized voting existed, and to see if the voting patterns were in violation of the California Voting Rights Act. So I'm happy to report that the conclusion of NDC was that racially polarized voting does not exist, and there is no such violation of the California Voting Rights Act. So since its incorporation in the history of Elk Grove, there's been a strong history of electing racially and ethnically diverse leaders, and the analysis conducted by the city showed that the candidates, and this is important, preferred by the protected-class voters are consistently successful in their campaigns for council. The analysis tended to show, for instance, that Latino, African-American, and Asian-American voters generally favored protected-class candidates of their choice, who were able to defeat non-protected-class candidates. The data did not indicate that the non-protected class, the white voters, voted as a block that defeated a candidate preferred by a protected class. Nonetheless, the city has made the decision to voluntarily transition from a by-district, from a from-district system to a by-district system because of the significant potential for litigation. So even when there's weak statistics showing racially polarized voting, cities that have chosen to challenge have found that the courts favor the plaintiffs. And in those cases, the cities are forced to pay large amounts in settlements and in litigation fees. So like most cities, Elk Grove is making the decision to make the transition and avoid the costly expense of litigation. So that's the reason why I'm here, is to assist the city in making that transition throughout the process.
I think you can use the arrow keys, and those should help on the keyboard. There you go.
So in recognition of all the fees that cities were being forced to pay, even when they settled very early in the process, the legislature set up a safe harbor system. So in the past, what would happen is the city would simply be sued with a lawsuit, and you would have no choice but to litigate or settle. So we found that many cities, water boards, school boards, irrigation boards, any elected body that was being sued were paying millions of dollars just to settle, and all of them ended up changing their election systems. So because the legislature recognized this tax, these are taxpayer dollars that were being spent, they set up a system where a potential plaintiff would have to serve a demand letter. And then there's a certain prescribed amount of time for the city to voluntarily transition from its at-large system to a by-district system. So when I say at-large system, that's also important because even though we are from-districts and Elk Grove has districts, in the definition in the California Voting Rights Act says that if it's a from-district system, it's considered an at-large system. So the only safe harbor from a California Voting Rights Act lawsuit is if it's a by-district system. The state legislature not only prescribed a certain amount of time to make the transition, but also a number of steps that need to take place before you make the transition. So you've already held two public hearings to talk about the composition of the future by-district system. Now we're in the third public hearing where we can start talking about maps. There will be a fourth public hearing that will be similar to this one, that will again talk about maps. And then a final adoption by ordinance will take place, and the by-districts will be in place for the November 2020 election. The odd thing about this process is that we have two bodies of laws that we must be mindful of, as I mentioned, the California Voting Rights Act and also the Federal Voting Rights Act. So once the city transitions and has a by-district system, you're no longer susceptible to a California Voting Rights Act lawsuit, but we want to make sure that we draw the district so that we don't put the city in a position where you could be susceptible to a lawsuit under federal laws. So federal laws state that each district must have equal population. This is where the snag comes in, because the courts look to the only official population data as being the census. Well, the last time a census was conducted was 2010. We won't be conducting another one until 2020. When we conduct another census, we'll be having to adjust the boundary so that there's equal population. So we're talking equal population as far as counting the number of people in each district, it's all people. So citizens, non-citizens, babies, everyone is counted, every person is counted for this number. So we recognize there has been significant growth in Elk Grove since 2010. Where, if you look at the Department of Finance figures compared to what was in, what the federal census said in 2010, it's roughly about 20,000 people. So there's a big difference. However, when we're drawing the boundaries for this exercise, we still need to use the 2010 data. We cannot use other data when we're balancing the districts. Which is, creates another unique situation for Elk Grove, because you have done this exercise since the last census. So those who were here during that time recall going through the process where maps were submitted on how to draw and divide the district, the city into four districts based on a number of factors. So equal population is one. Also, we must draw districts in a way that we don't dilute the voting strength of our protected-class citizens. So when we're drawing the maps, if there's a particular neighborhood that has a strong presence of a protected class, we can't divide that neighborhood or split up the neighborhood or draw the lines in a way that would dilute their voting strength. So we're mindful of that, and we have a couple of maps that show some of those concentration areas. The other thing we can't do is we can't draw a map that is solely based on race, so there cannot be any racial gary mandarin, meaning we can't draw a map just to pick up a certain protected-class group or to exclude a certain protected class. So that should not be an issue here. I know the current map is drawn with communities of interest in mind, and that's what we need to focus on, is neighborhoods. So this is, the unique thing about this is we've done this, or this was, the city completed this process in 2011, and all of the criteria that you see on the right-hand side of your PowerPoint talk about the principles that can be used in drawing these maps and that were used in 2011. So when we talk communities of interest, these are neighborhoods. This is what defines what your community is. Sometimes community of interest could be communities that have shared concerns. Say they have shared, maybe certain agriculture areas, certain areas of growth, perhaps areas of commerce or communities of interest. If there's like-minded people that live in a certain area, I happen to live in one of the Del Webb communities, not here, but in Manteca, so that could certainly be a community, you know, senior living communities are communities of interest. Or if there's like a legislative issue that they all coalesce around, or as far as like flooding or that type of thing, all of those issues are defined, anything that defines a neighborhood or brings some people together could be communities of interest. When we're drawing boundaries, we must have contiguous boundaries, because so we can't have a map that has a polka-dotted District One. All of the boundaries must touch. We try to draw maps that are compact as possible and follow man-made and natural boundaries so it makes sense for the voters. And then respecting voters' wishes, this has to do, if we can draw a map that avoids pairing council members, we prepare that option. We always say it's better for the voters to determine who has earned reelection as opposed to where the demographer draws a pen. For example, in some cases in some cities, I could draw all five council members in one district, and that would be telling the voters, sorry, it doesn't matter who you like, now you can only vote for one, or in this case it would be four. So if we can avoid pairing council members, and it's easily done in the city here. This is, what I'm showing on screen now is a demographic summary of the entire city. This information is useful for us because it helps us to do, not only does it show the total population of the city, that's based on the 2010 census, but it also shows us other information that helps define communities of interest. So sometimes communities of interest could be a particular neighborhood where a particular language is spoken at home, or a particular neighborhood that has a certain education level, or perhaps renters versus homeowners. These different types of things- These different types of things define communities of interest. Also on this information, in addition to the total population, is the citizen voting age population. This is important in the process as well, and you'll often see it written as CVAP. CVAP is what it's sometimes referred at, that's Citizen Voting Age Population. So these are residents who are 18 years of age. So this means that they, not necessarily registered to vote, but they would be, 18 years of age and older, I'm sorry, they may not necessarily be registered to vote, but they are eligible to vote. The reason why this number is important is this is the number that the courts look at when they're looking at the voting strength of a particular district. So after the maps are drawn, we prepare the same demographic summary for each of the districts for each of the maps. So each map will have four columns, Districts 1 through 4, and all of this data will be completed for each of the districts. And we look for any outliers. So if there is a particular, if we're consistently seeing, perhaps we have a district that has consistently around 35% of your Asian American citizen voting age population, and then we see one map that's an outlier that has, doesn't come near to that percentage, maybe they're in the 10%, that would cause us to look at that map and see if maybe the lines were drawn as a way to maybe diluted that neighborhood, a particular concentrated area of that protected We have some color-coded concentration maps that show where we're seeing the concentration areas of the different protected class groups. We see here, this is showing Latino concentrations, and mostly they're concentrated in the central part of the city, south of Bond and west of Elk Grove, Florin. Your Asian American concentrations are particularly concentrated in the north and southwest. The lighter colors, incidentally, show the higher concentrations, the pink being the highest, and then moving to the light green. There are a couple pockets of slight concentrations of our African American eligible voters in the northwest. Another thing we look at for communities of interest could be defined neighborhoods or HOAs. So this, these types of maps are useful to us when we're drawing maps to see where to draw a line, and try to either keep neighborhoods together or to separate them. One thing I should note is that there could be instances where a neighborhood would want to be divided. For example, I mentioned, I live in a senior living community, we have about 1,800 homes. If my city were go-to districts, I think that I would give strong consideration to having our district split into two different districts. So the north end was in one district, the south end in another district. And my reasoning for that would be, when we have our meetings at the clubhouse, we'd have two council members showing up. And we'd have two council members that would be very interested in our issues. So there also may be cases where you want each council member to touch a portion of the downtown, so that each council member has an interest, or touch a particular, you know, agricultural area, or have a little bit of both, you know, have both urban area and a rural area. So the current district map is compliant with all the laws as it should be, because it was also based on the same data that we must use today. We're looking at the map and do not, and see that this current map does respect the concentrated neighborhoods of our protected class group. And so this is definitely one of the maps that the city council will likely consider in going from a from district system to a by-district system. We did provide some potential revisions to the maps and alternatives to look at in drawing the districts. I'll just show a snapshot of those. So I do want to say that sometimes you'll see some very odd-shaped districts, and there's a couple of reasons for that. One of the main reasons is that we have to make sure that we don't split up those neighborhoods, concentrated neighborhoods of our protected class citizens. So that's one reason why sometimes there are lines that are drawn a little differently than what you think they should be. Also, we need to follow the geography that the federal government used in creating census blocks. They do the population count by census block, so sometimes there's very large census blocks. So particularly in areas that were formerly not populated, there'll be a very large census block, and we have to follow the geography of that census block group. So they're not all perfect squares like you consider a street block to be. Sometimes there are some very strange configurations of the census blocks that the federal government has assigned, and we have to follow those boundaries. So we provided three different options. I have different views of each of these three maps, and I'll go through them. I also have different views. So this is a color-coded view of the previous slide that you just saw. So it's almost, sometimes it's easier to see the different, the boundaries when you're looking at color-coded districts. So we have a map that some folks call cake layer, or horizontally drawn district. Let me show the color-coded one. And sometimes jurisdictions like to see this configuration because they want a good cross-section for each of the districts, and they want, or want to have, to include an area of the town that otherwise feels excluded. So for example, if areas of the west side of the freeway fill alienated from the east side, sometimes there's policy direction, thinking that a map that crosses over and includes this horizontal-type configuration may be good for the city. So I point this map out to you because these are perfectly acceptable maps to draw, as long as there's a policy reason for it. So if it makes sense to have these areas that are far-reaching, to cover a wide diversity of neighborhoods, and diversity of different types of needs, and shared equally among the districts, this is perfectly acceptable type of configuration. You will see that we have some narrowing of, like for example, in District 1, just for population balance, so that we can reach all the way to the east. So there are some, and just be mindful that the numbering of these districts is a little odd, so the top one here is 3, and then 1, 2, and 4. Recognizing that we have massive growth, especially in District 4 and in District 2, what we looked at is perhaps dividing the maps to take a more share of, especially District 4, where most of the growth is, and dividing it equally so that there would be a lesser impact when we redraw after the census. So this is an attempt to do so while still respecting those concentrated neighborhoods of our protected class voters. Oops, sorry, can't do that. This is the same map, just the colored version of it. And then when we talk about multiple representation, so what this map does is, has a couple of districts touch some of the neighborhoods. This one, this particular map provides multiple representation for Laguna West, Lakeside, Stone Lake, Sheldon, Greater Sheldon Road Estates, North Laguna Creek, Laguna Springs. There were some neighborhoods near the border that we couldn't divide, because we didn't want to divide the heavily Asian American areas. This is another version of that map. This particular slide just demonstrates that we did do that analysis of the citizen voting age population, and each of these revision, each of these versions of maps do have consistent numbers as far as your, as far as have concentration levels of your protected class citizens in both the Latino registered voters, and the Asian American registered voters, and African American registered voters. When we're looking at that population, and actually I believe it's the 2013 to 2017 population estimates, that may be it. Yeah, it's 20, 20, I'm sorry. I think it's 2013, 2017. We look at the American Community Survey when we're looking at the citizen voting age population. So it is a little bit more current than your 2010, it's more current than when you went through the process of 2011. The good news is that the demographics haven't changed much since, since when it was more, it's pretty evenly distributed from your current configuration as to what it is today. So this completes my portion of the presentation. We want to, if there's focus on the current map, we can get more details on that. And then if you want, and we hold the hearing on the map, get input from it. If you want revisions, or if you want to consider some of the possible alternatives that we showed, then we can get those posted on the website as well, and then be ready for discussion at your next meeting. So with that, I can answer any questions, or if you want to wait till after the public hearing, be happy to do so as well.
Are there any questions? Councilman?
Just curious, not that it makes any difference, how many of the cities that you've monitored that are switching from, that were at-large, were also from district?
There are very few. So, and I don't have that number, I don't have that number for you, but I can, the law is very clear, so if they haven't switched, or haven't been asked to make the switch, they likely will be.
No, I understand that. I was just curious, because, because at least from what I've seen, the model that we have is very unique. Works very well, but it's, and it's very unique. Thank you.
Councilman Sun?
Shree, thank you for this presentation. I had no idea there's so many different factors that go in. When you look at the, you're saying in terms of homeowners associations, demographics, neighborhoods, all these things, do, does anything govern over the other? Or how do you, how do you rank those when you're trying to balance it all?
Each jurisdiction is different, and the law intentionally does not rank any of the factors that you may consider. So it's really what best meets your community.
But when you did this, you had to, somehow you had to rank them in your own mind, right, in order to draw the lines with, you know, with our input? But did, did you have to do that ranking intuitively for?
Our highest priority was looking at the high-concentrated areas of the protected class groups, to make sure that those neighborhoods were not divided. And then we looked to the established associations, just to make sense to keep those aligned if possible. But that, but you don't need to stick with that. Like I said, and then we presented the multi-rep, multiple representation map that created two representatives for some of those areas, so you would have an option.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So I have a question. Earlier, I was looking at this, and you may have brought it up, but if, let's say, if we were to go with new boundaries, right? Could a voter potentially be, because of the alternating term, council member terms that we have, and not everyone is on the ballot at one time, could somebody actually be Xed out of an opportunity to vote now if we were to change the boundaries? And then of course, next year with the census, they could potentially skip two elections, right?
Yes, so, and thank you for bringing this up, because I need to mention that once we've drawn the districts, we'll be assigning an election year to each of the districts. So typically, if an incumbent is in that district, it's less confusing for the public if we assign that district to be the same year as the incumbent. So there would be, in 2020, there will be only two districts that are up for election in 2020. So if you resided, if you lived in one of the districts that wasn't up in 2020, you would be looking to not cast a vote for city council until 2022. If between, if in the year 2021, when we have to redistrict, we have to adjust some of those boundaries, and that particular resident is drawn into a district that has a 2024 election, then they would not be voting until 2024. So they could have gone from 2018 until 2024 without voting.
Potentially, couldn't they go to, back to 2016?
Um, everyone-
It's a four-year cycle for the council members.
Oh, for a four-year cycle? Well, for that particular, for that particular council-
So somebody potentially could go eight years without having an opportunity to vote.
Well, they were allowed to vote for anyone, so hopefully-
No, they're not. Even when they're the district, you can't vote.
No, in 2018, in 2018, you were allowed to vote.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions? Vice Mayor?
Just along that same line of thinking, is it conceivable then that somebody could get elected in a district that exists for the 2020 election, that then in the redistricting would be drawn out?
Yes.
But isn't-
So it is possible. Nobody, you would, if you were, once you were elected, you complete your four-year term. So no matter how the lines are drawn, or how the sequencing is assigned, everyone completes their term.
Hmm, okay.
So no term would be cut short because of districting.
Okay.
But they'd have to make the decision to move back into their own district again, right?
Right. Or say, if your term was up in 2020, but you were assigned to a 2022, if your district was assigned to a year 2022, you would have to sit off for two years before you could run again. That's why it makes sense to have it aligned with the incumbents. It's less confusing for the public.
I see.
So once we, once we narrowed down the map, we would talk about the sequencing. So at the next public hearing, if you're narrowing down the map to the preferred choice, then we get into the details of the sequencing, which is, which would not be difficult. None of the maps presented in the option, in this option pairs council members.
Okay. Councilmember Wayne, no?
She answered.
Okay, all right. No additional questions? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, before you leave the podium, can you bring back up the slide that has the three color-coded maps all on the same slide?
Okay, so missing from this slide is the current configuration.
Correct, but it's in the back of the room.
Do you like this?
That one, yeah, thank you.
Okay, all right. Excellent. This one, we want to declare a public hearing open, and we'll open for a public common opportunity. First speaker lined up is Olivia Sosa. Following Olivia is Susan Cooper.
Good evening. I've been a resident of Elk Grove for 19 years, and I am in support of the by-district transition. I would prefer that we maintain the current maps as they are until after the 2020 census, since we would have to relook at the data again. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Suzanne Cooper. Following Suzanne Cooper is Anna Edwards.
Susan Cooper, resident since 2001. I do support the redistricting. I also would say that I agree with the map, the current map, and stay with that particular one as the course of action.
Okay, thank you. Anna Edwards, following Anna Edwards is Kimberly Stewart Vitale.
Hi, I'm Anna Edwards, and I've lived here for, in November will be five years. I also would like to maintain the map as it is and through 2020. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Kimberly Stewart Vitale. Following that is Ian Stewart Vitale.
Hi, my name's Kimberly Stewart Vitale. I've been an Elk Grove citizen since I was 10 years old. And I am in favor of by-district voting, and I believe that we should use the current map to be adjusted at the next census.
Thank you, ma'am. Ian Stewart Vitale.
Hello, I'm Ian Stewart Vitale, and I'm a resident of Elk Grove. I supported the by-district voting, and I believe that we should stick with the current maps, please. Thanks.
Thank you. Kathy Ingo, following Kathy Ingo is Maureen Craft.
I support the by-district voting, and I am in favor of the current map, the way it is. I think that all three of the maps intentionally cut out the Stone Lake neighborhood. And I also have a problem with the people that did the surveying back in 2011, I believe. Vice Mayor Hume was the only one that was here, but you actually decided not to go with this. So you were there too, so, and you guys didn't go with this one firm, because there had been issues with them. There are some other issues. UC Davis brought that up. I'd be happy to provide you guys with this. And they're, and they're having some issues in Selma, California, too. So it looks like what they're drawing is gerrymandering, plain and simple. There's no, there is- There's no, there is no question that Laguna, West, and Stone Lake are sister communities. We were built by the same developer. We had the same HOA. We had the same board members until we were built out. We belong together. We've always been together over there, and we do not want to be separated. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Marion Craft. Following Marion Craft is Lynn Wheat.
Good afternoon, good evening. I mean, I, I am in support, of course, of by-district voting, and I do support the current map that we have now. What you guys have to realize is that you're elected to serve the people. And as the representative stated, there would be people who would be cut out of voting for a number of years. We need to keep the integrity of voting for our citizens of Elk Grove. It is important that we wait until the 2020 census has been conducted, because as she stated, you can't create balance until then. So why would we go to another map? Once again, you guys were elected to support, to serve us. And it needs to be, it needs to be a fair practice. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Lynn Wheat. Following Lynn Wheat is Dinesha Tilles.
Good evening. I support the current map, because I remember that when there were the public hearings for that, and that we actually all sat around tables and worked on some of the maps, and the consultant helped us. And we were looking at what would best serve the people that lived in certain communities. I think that you would remember that. And so I would like us to stay with this current map for 2020. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Dinesha Tilles. Following Dinesha is Randy Becker.
Hello, Dinesha Tilles, resident since 1999. I'm here today because I woke up and read a article in the Elk Grove News titled Darren Mandarin, which is clever. But I was like, wait, not my city councilman, right? My city councilwoman wouldn't do that. So I'm hoping that this is a misinterpretation, and that in fact, we are all on the side of making sure that voters have equitable voice in our elections. And to that end, I think that keeping the current map and not spending additional money on changing the map before the census is the best practice, and would be the most equitable for our citizens, and I hope that you do keep that map. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Randy Becker. Following Randy Becker is Denise Walker.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council. My position is public. I made it clear a long time ago that we'd be at this spot. I wasn't, I'm not for by-district for many reasons. That's public. Changing the map should be done over a course of time. I think we need to ju, get a jump on the 2020 census and look at the changes that we need to make for the map. However, we don't have all the information. And as I stated long ago, that it would be best to do all this together after the 2020 census. Because we can keep the map as it is, but it's not correct. So we're going to be voting on, on fake information. So no matter what direction we choose to go, as far as changes, we don't have all the information. I've got ideas, but those ideas need to be spread out over meetings so we can have spiritual or good conversation with the community. And whomever wants to put this together, or whoever you hire. But I, I'm, I'm afraid that, you know, having more than one representation in the West, as you brought up, well, all you have to do is look at Sacramento and what one representation buys you. Look at Carr and look at Ashby. Look at those neighborhoods. Look at the problems and issues that they've dealt with. So, you know, this isn't about the five of you that's sitting here today. This change is about 10 years into the future. And if people or someone wants to disagree with a certain person or persons, understand, this is what you're going to be living with. We lived with the county under this type of governance. That's why we voted it in the way we have. It's probably the second thing that I've witnessed in this area that's going to be detrimental to the area. We may not see it, I may not see it, but it will happen. It happened with the county. It happens almost every week in Sacramento. I'm proud with the system we have. It's too bad that we're going to have to destroy it. It's too bad. Those that want to change, you'll see, you'll reap the benefits of those changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Our final speaker is Denise Walker.
Hi. I'm a resident of Elk, Old Elk Grove. I've lived in Elk Grove for over 40 years. My family's been here since the early '30s. When we voted for cityhood, we voted for at-large voting, and I'm all for us keeping at-large voting.
All right. Seeing that there are no additional speaker, want to close public comment and declare a public hearing? Oh, one more? Oh, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and councilpeople. And I think I messed Brenda up. I could have turned in my 10.1 by mistake. I'm sorry. I double-checked, and I was wrong. Anyway, I support from district and at-large. I like the, what the lady said. I have lived here over 45 years, pretty clo, a little bit, she's lived here longer. I support the current maps for 2020, but I appreciate what that gentleman said before me, because I've been attending the CSD meetings, and they voted to start it now, but when, after the 2020 census is complete, they will have to redo and spend that money all over again. So I am recommending to the council that you wait to do this until after the census is done, so we will only spend the money once. So one thing that really bothered me tonight, after I heard the presentation, and it was difficult for me, I could not hear very well back there, and I'm, my eyes are getting worse. I couldn't read, and I couldn't stay with it. So from these attorneys that are doing this, I call it bullying. It is a bully maneuver. It's not any different than the handicap lawyer that goes looking for people, companies and cities to sue over any little detail. That's not right in either case. And I call this bullying from the attorneys that are going after every city in this state. I appreciated the information, the lady's presentation. I have, I have a concern about the horizontal map, the cake layer. I would not recommend that at all. We, all the neighborhoods, they each have their distinct flavor and issues, and need to remain together. And I believe the maps we have now are pretty, pretty good. And I appreciated the fact that, and I knew already, because of what CSD demographers had said, that our, our, our city is very diverse, and really, really amazingly throughout the, every neighborhood. I mean, it's just great. And so that's why I don't see why we have to go by-district. I think we could stay at-large, as we have all these 19 years. I specifically pressed that the rural or in, rural area needs to stay together, as this lady mentioned on her two neighborhoods. I think it can be done. I did, because of the closed, open, closed caption, whatever it's called, I could not see the titles of the next map. I think it said shared growth. I think all of us need time to look at the maps. I have no idea which, a lot of what she said, I could not hear. So I, I've missed a lot. And I want to really take a good look at those maps. So I'm hoping, gentlemen, and Stephanie, that you are not going to vote on this tonight. I hope not. We all need tomorrow time to look at the maps and read the information that was presented tonight. And the third map, I saw that it splits the rural area horizontally. It split horizontally a few places, and then it went all over the place. So I, I think these three maps need to be looked at much closer, and I hope we have time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate it. I see no additional speaker sign up to speak. Want to close public comment and declare public hearing closed. Members, deliberation and direction.
Mayor.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming out tonight and providing their input. That's what this process is about. There's no perfect system. I said that before. And this is a process. We've gone down this process. This allowed for public input, for council input. And for me personally, I was partaking in a process. You know, I've, for nearly 20 years now, I've, since I've moved back, I've been, I've been volunteering in this community. And one of my earliest experiences was with what one of the speakers highlighted about the challenges of, of in the, in the county, where our community planning advisory council fought against a rezone of homes, a rezone of employment zone lands to homes. And going down to the county board of supervisors, trying to appeal to the different supervisors during that time, and to have only Don Natoli as, as the advocate, to see him pounding his fist on the table as the represent, representative of his district, and not have his councils, his colleagues heed his words. Now, you know, as we always talk about bringing jobs to Elk Grove, a big portion of that on the west side was rezoned to homes. So for me, I'm looking out for the future of the city beyond, you know, as we move to a different governing system, each one presents its different challenges. And we have, we realize now we have challenges on the west side. And so I wanted, I was hoping to look at, at least, and I don't see why there's a problem to take a look, but I was hoping to look at having, making sure we had multiple representation or more representation on that side, dealing with what we know now are, you know, flood issues and, and, you know, other things in the future. So, but I, you know, as I see these maps coming forward, I mean, there's so many different considerations. And, and the other thing is, we were told that the, the, the demographers could project out and get relatively close in terms of the population. So even though we don't have the census data, it just seemed to make sense to at least take a look. We're not adopting any maps tonight. So anyway, again, getting back to, you know, what I'm hearing tonight from folks is that they want to keep the maps as they are. And so anyway, I'll wait here for further deliberation, but I'm kind of, you know, I'm in the, kind of leaning towards the same thing.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Wayne?
So I, you know, I think, and Mr. Hobbs, correct me if I'm wrong, and, you know, there's been several emails, and I've read several articles in the news. My understanding is that we decided to go towards the by-district voting method, and that with that came this process that we had to do maps. And so I, what I want people to understand is that it was an opportunity for us to hear from the community and hear from the council about different types of map options that we can look at. But I've received several emails stating that they want to go by, that you want to go by district. And my understanding is that we've already voted, or we've already decided that. And this is what the process was. And so it, I don't know how much more clear we can be here, or to the public and those that are listening, but I know I've received several emails. I don't know if my colleagues have. But it made me wonder if I was seeing things differently, because my understanding is that we made that decision several meetings ago, and this is the process. And that it's not that we're putting out money that we don't have to, but the process, and when we decided to go by district, we had to hire a demographer or a firm to do this and to give us these public meetings and discuss the options of the maps, and see what options there are for us to discuss, and not just go straight into saying this is the map that we're going to use. Because I think giving our community options to look at what's best going to be for our city is a good thing, and not just putting it out there and saying this is what we're going to use. So Mr. Hobbs, if you can, can clarify, maybe for the public and for folks, so that-
Sure, I'd be happy to. So that, you are right, Councilmember Wayne, this is the process to go through to move to a, to transition to a by-district form of, of voting. The council passed a resolution intent to do so. When the council did that, it triggered the public hearing process, requires at least four, possibly more, public hearings, and we're in the third of four. We cannot adopt, the council cannot adopt any maps tonight, even if you wanted to. We have to have at least one more public hearing. So part of the process was to look not only at the current map, which there seems to be some inclination to move towards, but also look at other possibilities. And you saw three other revisions to the draft current map tonight that the council can consider further. Cannot adopt any of those tonight, but if the council is inclined to further look at those, then we can bring those back, any of those or none of those, at the next council meeting, which would be the very earliest possibility that you would be able to make the final decision to adopt the districts.
So tonight, you're asking us which one of these maps we want to move forward to the next meeting to make a decision?
Correct.
If any?
If any. So we have the current map. That's the proposed map on the table right now. And then these are revisions from the current map. So if the council would like to further consider all three of these revisions, they can do so. If you decide that you don't want to consider any further, you could do that as well, or you could pick one or two. Keep in mind that if, at the next meeting, you decide to bring up a new map, that will trigger the requirement of a new public hearing, because any proposed map for adoption would have to be posted on the city's website at least seven days in advance. So it doesn't mean that you couldn't consider new maps at the next meeting. It just means you would have to have another public hearing with another posting.
Okay. And then once we, what map we decide to use at the next meeting, after the census 2020, we would run through this process all over again.
You would have to go through the process again.
Thanks for clarifying. I, you know, I've heard from several people tonight, and thank you all for speaking. It sounds like most of us, most of you here want to keep the map as is, and I think our, our councilmember soon here has also agreed to that. I, I would be in favor of keeping the map as is, as well to moving that map forward, and then taking a look at it again after the census 2020.
Okay. Anyone else? Point of clarification. The actual act of going by district is by ordinance, not by the resolution.
That is correct. It would require an ordinance, yes.
And part of this is the steps that are necessary to go by ordinance, by district. Okay. All right. I support that. Councilmember?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a couple comments. You know, I think I've been pretty clear on my thoughts on this. I think the comment that was made that this is a bully tactic, absolutely. Five of us up here, we got a gun to our head. This is, anybody who's been here for 19 years or more, who was here when we switched to become a city, as Councilman Sun said, they know the history of why we ended up voting this direction. I believe this current law is an unintended consequence of being a from district. It was never addressed in there. It was strictly an at-large. And I agree, the at-large system, if you do not have districts, is not a fair system. Because you could have everybody living five houses in a row, controlling a whole city, but we don't have that. So, you know, there's just, there's some huge philosophical differences, which is okay. But it's not being done in a fair manner. It's being done with a gun to our head, and that's the part that I find very, very offensive.
Okay. Anyone else? Vice Mayor?
Yeah, if I can just clarify with the city attorney again. So tonight's purpose is to put forward maps to be considered, that then at the next council meeting, we will choose which one of those maps to move forward with. Is that correct?
That's correct. If any.
If any.
You could choose not to select any of them, but yes, that would be your first opportunity to select one of the maps.
Okay. If that's the case- Okay. If that's the case, then I would ask for council to at least include the map that is essentially the same as the existing districts, but anticipates the growth areas and stays within that allowed deviation of population between districts. So that hopefully then, following the 2020 numbers, we will be closer to what final districts may look like.
So, Councilmember Hume, looking at that three maps, which one of those, do you mean divided growth or the multiple?
Yeah, the divided growth.
I think that's what you mean. Okay.
Well, I mean, based on what we just, we just heard, I'd also like to consider the original map too.
Well, the original map's already there.
Okay.
That's, that's there no matter what. This would just be if we were going to add additional map for consideration.
Okay.
So if you accept Vice Mayor Hume's proposal, we would be bringing back two maps. The current map plus the divided growth map and not bringing back the other two. Is that, is that correct, Councilmember Hume?
That's what I'm offering up, yes.
Yeah, that's fine. I think, I think to keep it simple. I mean, I'm more geared, personally, I'm more geared to the same map, but I want to look at the options. I mean, this was just shown to us tonight. Folks, you're seeing it the first time, we're seeing it the first time tonight too.
Yeah.
So want to be able to digest it, make sure we're making an educated decision and not just jumping the gun from the dais.
And while we bring both, both of these map backs, back, we're not necess, we would have to change it again should we choose the divided growth, once the census 2020 results come in, we would have to relook. And this may stay as what the divided growth area looks like.
That is correct. You would always have to make a change at the next census.
Yeah, I just wanted to reiterate because the last time I was, I mean, I'm the one who asked for the cake layered map too, as to look at. And because we, we've always heard when we're around the community, it's a, it's a east versus west. You know, you're not really considered Elk Grove unless you're east of 99 or, you know, I mean, it's joking, in a joking manner, but the, I think there, there is recognition. There was an old Elk Grove or the original Elk Grove, and then there's a new Elk Grove. And there's always been this, this little bit of divide. And so the, the hope was that how, how could we bring the appreciation of the rural side over to the new side and how, and, and keep uniformity amongst the city? That was the intent. I heard from a couple of people tonight from the rural area, that's not what they like. But just, just wanted, people to understand where the, the idea behind that was. So, but I, so I think we got a motion on, unless there's further debate.
No motion, just direction. I've, I've yet to input. Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Council, Councilmember Soon, and that makes logical sense. I guess my only concern with that and, you know, bearing in mind that we're not even going to go with the layering approach.
Yeah.
The initial concern was each district has certain neighbors that have certain characteristics. And so, you know, from the get-go, I, I wanted to see what that would look like. But at the same time, that was my concern, that we may lose the integrity of certain neighborhoods or certain, you know, sections of the city.
Yeah.
So, but you have a good point. You know, I mean, I, I've heard that before, right? The whole east and west thing.
Well, and I'm seeing that point too, is that, you know, there are, I mean, there's, there's four associations on the west side for us, you know. And so it, it would significantly divide that.
Yeah. So my concern with the divided growth map is the issue that I brought up with a consultant. So we are looking at District One and District Four. I'm anticipating that District Four is probably going to grow with all of the new development in that. In the event that we were to go with this particular map, it's going to absorb, you know, portion of Laguna West, the Stone Lake area. And then what may happen is if population increase, the District Four could then move into the east side, live more to the east side and actually, district out the Stone Lake area. And that's where I would raise concerns about potentially residents not being able to vote for a council member, being that council District One and council District Four are on different calendars for elections.
So I hear what you're saying there. Are we allowed to provide direction to tweak these maps tonight? Because we're not putting in a new map at the next meeting. We would, we would say make this happen and bring that back for consideration?
Yeah, you can do that. But understand, if, you can give direction to revise a map. But understand what will happen is staff will have to interpret your direction and draw a map that we will post seven days in advance. And I, I'm confident we can probably get that right. But if you start making changes after that, if we don't get it quite right, you'd have to have another public hearing. But yes, Councilmember Hume, you can give direction to draw a fourth or fifth map if, if you like.
So I think the direction, as the mayor just sort of elucidated, it is fairly clear to put the Stone Lake Lakeside neighborhoods back into District One and then to adjust...
What I'm suggesting, Vice Mayor, is that we stick to the same boundaries. We have that in place. We're going to change these up again. And, you know, I'm pretty confident that as we get more data with census, we're going to be at this and we're going to decide what's going to be for the next 10 years. One of the speakers had indicated, and I think it's somewhat misleading, is that this decision tonight is not for the next 10 years. This is until the next census where we're going to sit down and redraw everything. I'm concerned about the potential lawsuit. I'm concerned about the timeline that we're working with. If we don't hustle up, we may be facing additional monies that we'll, we'll need to pour into this. I, I honestly believe that the council members in their district, they've been doing a very good job. I, I think that the residents love you. And I wouldn't be concerned about, you know, concerned about your, you being in the seat at this time.
I've never voiced that concern.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to anticipate the future redraw that's going to have to happen because we are doing this in advance of the 2020 census. And anticipate where those growth areas primarily have been, which is in District Two and District Four. And to, again, as has been mentioned, try to keep those communities of interest together. Because in the, the cake layered proposal, you essentially could have all four council members live on one side of 99, representing the other side of 99.
Sure.
Right? But on the divided growth, I think we're, we're substantially similar to the existing map. We're just anticipating that, you know, the amount of growth that has happened in, in District Four and trying to get ahead of that so that there won't have to be a drastic redraw in two years.
I, I'm not convinced I would support the original map.
Well, we, we are bringing the original map. We're bringing, he's...
Right. I just want to have more things for people to weigh in on. We've heard from a select group of people that have shown up here tonight, but this whole process, these maps are going to be posted for the next two weeks.
So, you know what? I'm open to that possibility as long as we have the time. You know, that's my biggest concern. As we tweak and as we go, do we really have enough time?
Well, we certainly have time to do use, to post the current map in any or all of these three. I think we, we have consensus for the divided growth area, but we'll confirm that. If we start tweaking or changing lines, we do have time to start drawing that. The risk is that if we don't draw it quite the way the council envisions, and we bring something back in two weeks that's different, and you tell us to go back to the drawing board, so to speak, that would necessitate another public hearing. And we could run past the 90-day timeframe, sort of the safe harbor timeframe that we have right now. But we certainly do have time for the current map in any one or all of these maps.
So let me see if I can sum this. What I'm hearing is there's a consensus for the divided growth map and the original map. So we have two maps.
But then you raised a concern about the folks on the west side. And so I was suggesting, and if I can finish my thought here, it's a pretty simple change for the demographer to make. And I would even have a suggestion where you might find these numbers, but it'd be to put the Lakeside and Stone Lake communities back into District One and make up those population numbers by taking everything south of Elk Grove Boulevard from District One back into District Four.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see how that looks. Yeah, I'm, I'm open to that.
Wait, so this, so, so this part here?
Right, right. Yeah, the, the area...
That's essentially the, isn't that essentially the original map?
Yeah, essentially it is, isn't it? Yeah.
No, it, it changes District Three and it changes a portion of District Two.
You know, I mean, we have the original map. So why don't we have the, and we have Vice Mayor's input. So why don't we, what's the problem about bringing the two? I don't, I don't understand. If we end up, I, I mean, there's a likelihood that we just adopt, end up adopting the original map anyway. And to your point, Vice Mayor, you just have another option, at least bringing forward to hear input. Is that what I heard?
That's all I'm looking for, is to have, so people have more...
Would, would the tweak add another open hearing?
I, why are we trying to guess that now? And we were, we haven't even heard input from everybody yet.
Right. No, I'm just curious, the timeline, yeah.
So, and we'll have to clarify what exactly the, the tweak is, but we can get to that. So to answer your question, Mayor, if we made this so-called tweak and then brought it back for the next meeting, that would not necessitate a new hearing. And if it's something that works, then you could adopt it. If you made further changes that night, then it would require a new hearing. So think of the basic premise is, once we get to the point where you can start adopting the maps, then anytime you make a change to those maps, you would have to put it out for another seven day notice in advance of the next public hearing, next council meeting. So anytime you made a change at that point, it would trigger a new meeting. We're not there yet. So you still have an opportunity to make changes without triggering a new council meeting, new public hearing. Does that make sense?
I think it does. From the direction if we were to go with it, the tweak can be made and both maps can be viewed at the next meeting and we're good.
Well, I think we're talking about three maps. We have the, the current map. We have the so-called divided growth area.
Oh, I see.
And then we have the changes that Vice Mayor Hume is suggesting. But I'd, I'd like to get a little more clarity because it seems like there might have been some confusion there is in my mind as to what exactly we were looking to do so that we can try to draw that as, as precisely as possible.
Well, that would be, I would address the mayor's concern and so we have three, so we bring three maps.
He would have three maps under that scenario, yes.
Okay.
Okay, we have a consensus?
I'll make the motion then.
Well, so then to clarify.
Thank you, yeah.
Okay. It would be everything west of the railroad tracks goes back into District One from District Four. And everything south of Elk Grove Boulevard, east of the railroad tracks, goes back to District Four from District One. So if you look at District One as this cascading pink, that bottom portion of pink would go back into District Four.
Do you have this? Okay, she's going to be the one to...
The, the pink area, south of Elk Grove Boulevard, but yeah.
Yeah, whatever makes the numbers work, but that's generally what I'm suggesting.
Yeah. Which, that third iteration, I mean, it's just going to look a lot like the original map, I think.
A little bit different.
It's fine.
It might. It, it would give you a third option. And I don't know if the council's going to end up adopting that or not. It gives you a third option though, if that's something you want to do.
Okay, I'm fine with that.
So do we have, do we have consensus for the original map, the divided growth area, and then the so-called tweak that we just described?
Yes.
Okay. All right, good.
Got it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next item.
And our regular agenda, action items and recommendations. And that one item is item 10.1, which is consider policies on recruitment and composition of the planning commission. And good evening again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm going to be doing the presentation for this item, so I'm just going to be stepping up to the speaker podium to pull that up. And good evening. Here we are for item 10.1, which is consider policies on the composition of the planning commission. So from September 11th, we had consensus to bring back this item to do a review of comparatively sized cities or cities in the region as far as how they approach their planning commission. This process, what staff went through, was going through municipal codes and charters of various California cities. We kind of set two kind of flavored pots in order to address the similar population and then regional cities. And the regional cities, we kind of started with a tighter formation of counties and then went out a little bit further, just to give you two sets. It's about just under 20 sets on each one. Inside of the staff report, the first one that we're going to be going through is the segment of cities by relative population. And really what happened when staff kind of looked at this is when you talk about diversity and inclusion on any of our boards and commissions, we started drilling down that if you make more opportunities for folks to serve, that's really where you're going to try and get some, that's where we found traction as far as what you could do. And so when you're looking at that, it's either about how many seats you have or how many opportunities there are, whether you have any kind of an attrition process through terms or term limits. Those really became all these factors in terms of how to get folks into seats in order to serve. And then you just look at your own process. How do you do your recruitment process? What do you ask of recruits? What is the, any kind of vetting that's done or any of that kind of process? Because some of those can be hurdles, even though they are something that can focus you as far as what we're looking for on any commission or committee. Sometimes what we've found, especially in Elk Grove, we've found that when we put additional constraints as far as what it takes to serve, it ends up closing off some opportunities for folks in order to step up. From the staff report and attachment one, we had the, it was about 20 cities, just under 20 cities by population. So this is a range from 150,000 up to 215,000. I split this chart in two. So you're seeing the top end, from the top end up at Modesto, up at just over 215,000. And then we've got Elk Grove in bold. But really what we're looking at is at the end of it, what is the council size? What's that planning commission size? So if we're looking at this increasing opportunities to serve, do we see any kind of patterns or differences in terms of how many folks are serving both on a council and the planning commission? We threw in some other factors just in order to make it more comparative, just as far as the columns that go through, whether it's charter or general law. Elk Grove is a general law city. We see a lot of these charter cities for as they get larger. And when we look at the question mark about elected or selected mayor, because for Elk Grove, this really comes down to a question about having an elected mayor. Change the scope of how we do appointments when they come forward for consideration. Because as general law city with a directly elected mayor, that's what requires the process that we go through today. We also put a, I put in the section on the method of appointment as that was dictated through charters. And what you'll see is there's going to be some variation. So majority vote of the entire council, or there's these council nominates positions, the mayor makes the appointments. Or you may see some that'll be council later. That means that those individual council members make the appointments themselves. And so that's where we get into the method of appointment. On the bottom end of that population scale, that's where we'll go into, Elk Grove again, is listed again, just to give you that scale. But these will be the ones that are of smaller size of Elk Grove. Second set of review that we'll be going into, I just wanted an opportunity for folks that might be viewing from home, just have an opportunity to see this pulled up. But the second set of review was for regional agencies. So it's starting off with the counties of Sacramento, Placer, San Joaquin. Those are going to be the ones that I'll have pulling up here next. So these are the comparative by region. And again, Elk Grove's going to be bolded on that chart, just so you have it by comparison. And then we took another, there's another page of this, which goes on to Solano and Yolo counties, just to give a little bit bigger scope. And it was also to play catch-up. I had 20, 20 cities for the population. So we wanted to get about 20 cities for looking at a regional perspective. But again, you're going to see a lot of variation in population and all that kind of good stuff. But it's kind of interesting on this one, when looking around, you know, you see that a lot of our local city governments are actually five-member boards. Kind of interesting. And Rancho Cordova, actually, sorry, I didn't put it in there because they don't have a planning commission, but I think they're a five-member board at Rancho. So it's kind of an interesting correlation that just went from our immediate region. And then the next table is just kind of the second part of that. These, this was attachment two to the staff report, which has them all in one spot. But as we go to attachment two, now we're looking at, and maybe I can blow that up so everybody doesn't see all the rest of the stuff. Sorry about that. But now we're looking at the, kind of that expanded view of going into our counties a little bit further away. But again, the same pattern where you're looking at charter, general law, elected or selected, council size, and then the planning commission size. As I was mentioning, our current appointments are by the mayor. And that is the section of the government code that's going to pull that requirement. So it kind of changes the equation. Because when we're looking at increasing opportunities to serve or how we do appointments, one element is just increasing seats or the opportunities for folks to do those things. It could be an element that's spoken in, as we see in a wide variety, when you're looking across all the different jurisdictions, that they do different processes and how they do the appointment. And one concept could be that if you have one individual making all appointments, that's a little bit more of a narrower scope than if you had all the members of an elected board having an opportunity to make appointments. It's not so much of an issue here when we're in Elk Grove, because how we do the process is through the mayor making the appointments with that consensus of the city council. So it kind of dictates that appointment process that we have. So staff, when we're looking at this, we're looking more at, okay, but then what are the other opportunities that we have in order to pursue? One item that we looked at as staff is what are the past recruitments that we've seen for the planning commission? And I think one of the big takeaways that I had from this is that almost annually, we've had a vacancy come up. But one of the big items was that though we get a lot of applicants, we use a filter in order to look at how we want to fill those seats. And one of those filters, interestingly enough, we just had our discussion about by district representation, a filter that we put on in order to fill a district seat that is not represented is actually resulting in us really narrowing the scope of all of our applicants. It's one of those first barriers that immediately, and I think we've seen this as well with the youth commission, when you start taking into consideration, though it's not a requirement... the youth commission, when you start taking into consideration, though it's not a requirement to have district representation, or the youth commission would be looking for a balance of representation amongst schools, all of a sudden you start filtering these pools of applicants that come in. And so when you're talking about diversity and inclusion of applicants, when you were creating these kind of, there are restrictions as far as looking at a filter, if there's a requirement, our pools actually go down much smaller, and it's one of those things that, as I was looking at it in the process, it's one of those things to advertise that a little bit more in advance, it might change what we see in applicant pools, if that's actually the element of how we're moving forward for doing recruitments. As we went through the process of looking at other municipal codes and throughout the staff report, there were bullet points that came up, really, this is just a summary of all the practices that were seen in other jurisdictions with their planning commissions. And I think, just to kinda reiterate, what we've seen is that for a lot of adding of processes, whether it's adding a process to vet applicants, or adding additional experience questions, these things, though, they are great in order to hone the pool of applicants that you're seeking, one of those things is that sometimes can fly in the face of inclusion and getting more people to apply, because all of a sudden we're seeing smaller pools. And I think we've seen this in the past with our recruitment pools for the Historic Preservation Committee, it was a committee that had a lot of requirements for professional designations. Our applicant pools were usually one to two people, and part of it is the interest level of serving on certain committees, but what happens is as we create more policies and practices, they can become more restrictive and actually create more barriers for folks to try and get in. The last element that the staff report kind of goes into is just about our process of recruitment, and our recruitment is pretty straightforward, and attachment four to the staff report is our forum for applicants, which is really open-ended. The application is more of a process for us to get the contact information for potential recruits, they're allowed to add on any supplemental information that they want for the review process, but when we talk about our Elk Grove process of how we make appointments, once we have a vacancy, that gets approved for advertising as a consent item, from about a month when we advertise, is about when we bring back the item for consideration. The council is not receiving the bundle of all the application packets and supplemental information until the Friday before the decision's made on Wednesday, though applicants have, and from what I've understood of applicants, they do reach out individually to council members or the mayor when there's, when they're going for consideration, but that's a pretty quick process of a month, going just for receiving applications, and then putting a bundle in front of the city council the Friday prior, and then you get to make a decision on Wednesday going after that. And that's what some of these bullet points, they start talking about different processes about how we might do review. But with that, that's the summary of the staff items, if you have any questions, I'm available to answer questions, or I can take them from over that way.
Any questions? I do have a question. In your research, do any of these planning commissioners serve in the same capacity that we do, which is essentially, you serve a lifetime unless you did something wrong and you're being pulled out and impeached?
I think for a lot of agencies, they actually, they do have terms and term limits, it's varied across all the agencies, they usually will have sequence, it's not so much term limits, that was pretty rare, that agencies had term limits, but they usually would have terms, and they'd come up, but part of that for couching the terms is a lot of them were tied to council terms, or the mayor's terms, because if we go back and look at the list, the appointing authority goes back to individual council members, going back to individual mayor, and so when you have that dynamic going, those terms tend to go along with the terms of the elected official. And so that basically what happens is when the elected officials vote, if they are not back in office for another term, that means somebody else knows in, and they're usually, they have the potential to make a new appointment of whoever the planning commissioner might be on that respective board. So I'd say it's a little bit different for us, just in terms of, there are terms that show up a lot for different planning commissions, but it's because there's a different appointing authority. It's usually coming from majority votes of the council, it's coming from individual council members making appointments or making nominations that are then approved by a mayor.
Let me see if I understand this correctly, the appointing either council member or mayor, does the term of the planning commissioner mirror that term of that appointing elected?
Correct, that's kinda how that plays out.
Okay, so did you see any city that was asked where the mayor's appointing elected, but obviously we can't clear the whole planning commission after two years? How do they address that, do they alternate, or?
For a lot of, most of the ones, and if there's anything, we used to have these policies, kind of when we'd see turnover by elections, what they usually end up doing is creating, there's one section of their code that's gonna say, on the year that we adopted this, half the board will have two-year terms, half of them have four-year terms, and then they would move that, move it in sync, usually with the elected officials as they move forward, when it's election season.
Okay, the other question I have is, was there anything that stood out in the efforts of other cities that was to promote diversity and inclusion?
I think kind of a lot of the best practices that came forward are gonna be bullet points on this list, I think some of the steps is just even, even the agencies that ask for demographic information from applicants, we don't ask for anything of applicants as they're coming in. I didn't see anything that was codified in which agencies were looking at, what is the current composition, and how do we equate that in? That would be something that we'd have to take a deeper dive into, looking into staff reports of when they did actual appointments. So this level of review is done at a higher level, looking at just what's in their codebooks, just like in our code, our code's pretty brief as to how we actually get to each individual appointment, I think for every time we've done an appointment process, there's usually quite a process that goes on and is deliberated as far as filtering why the decisions are being made for individual appointments.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? No? Thank you. All right, at this point in time, one open public comment, first speaker is Maureen Craft, Paula Maureen is Sharon Lines, and, come on up.
Good evening again, I wanted to talk about the planning commission in regards to, I think that we should look at adding seats to our planning commission. I also think that we need to look at diversity and inclusion, it has been something that we've talked about over the last year, you turned the multicultural board into the diversity and inclusion board, and I think that we need to look at the representation on our planning commission as it reflects our city. So that would be one of my suggestions, that I think that as a council, we need to definitely look at diversity and inclusion in our planning commission.
Thank you, Sharon Lines, Paula Sharon is Alma Shergill.
Thank you again, after I started reading the staff report, it hit me right away, the planning commission is just not an, any committee, it is extremely important for the citizens and for the council. They do all the pre-work for you folks, and they clear the air, they go through issues, they do a lot of site looks, and site trips, and they just kinda clean it up for you. And to me, it's a special group, and it's a major commitment to you and the citizens. And as the application said, I was quite shocked at all that is required of planning commissioners, even though I've attended so many meetings over the years, but to see it on paper was amazing. It's a big job, and extremely important, and to be taken seriously by anybody that would apply, it requires a real commitment in time and work ethic, extremely important to all of us. So I appreciate this information, and it's very interesting. One thing, on page two, under expanding opportunities to serve, I would hope that you would not add any more voting members, because then you've got four folks right now from the council members, and then, of course, the mayor has a choice, I call it the mayor's choice. So I think that is really good, because five is enough, if you start skewing, adding more, okay, what do you do? Two for each district? You don't want a three-two, four-two, five-two, whatever. So I would appreciate that remaining as it is. Also, let's see, on page four, comment, and I don't remember the section, but it says here, I was really surprised to see the requirements of the planning commission, not much, and I thought that was great, that allows a lot of people to participate. And I would suggest that you keep it at least one representative from each of the four council districts, as I said earlier, that would, to me, that would cause an equal representation and not skew everything. Top of page five, towards the end of the report, it says there is no set process for interviews of candidates. And I remember attending one, and it really shocked me, when they just handed in paperwork, and I've been on several committees over the years, that people spoke, not only their paperwork was there, but they asked additional questions, and every question was the same for every person. I know this will take time, but I think this is extremely important, because, as my husband said, what if somebody else fills out the application? And that's happening all over, college applications to down-to-work applications. And I think it's important to hear directly from, hear the voice of the person, because you hear the personality, you hear the tone, and I think it's all important, so I, the one thing I would recommend, interviewing the candidates, I don't care if there's fifty.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is.
One thing?
Go ahead.
I would like to see a committee do that, not the council, but a staff and citizens involved in that, thank you.
Alma Shergill.
Good evening, council, first, thank you to the city for having the memorial service yesterday for Deputy Dollywall, I know that law enforcement and staff put their heart into it and council members attended. Deputy Dollywall was a jewel for the city community, and I appreciate that you all put your heart into that. With regard to the planning commission, I think the first thing is that we all need to get, wrap our heads around the idea that in 2019, for Elk Grove, we just can't have a planning commission that has no people of color when our city has majority people of color, and particularly when there's so many qualified applicants and people that are willing to serve. And that's true, even though in the past, there have been some people of color, you know, we need more women to serve, and it's difficult to say, okay, take these people out, or let's change the composition. So the easier way is, and I would just recommend, just add two people to the planning commission now. And then, that also makes, gives you some flexibility down the road, that, you know, you're not stuck with this district and that district, you can have an easier mix. And I'd also recommend you add a term limit, so it's not a lifetime position, because then you get stuck, like we are now, where it's hard to make the changes that you wanna see. So I think if you do that, we get comfortable with the idea that some changes need to be made, and we don't wanna embarrass people that are on the commission now, that you should be able to come to some resolution, which says that we're gonna get some more diversity, people of color and women on the planning commission. So thank you all for looking at that issue.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker is Randy Becker.
Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, I wanna thank Mr. Shergill for bringing this issue forward. Him and I disagree probably ninety-nine percent of the time, but anytime we can discuss issues of a very young city compared to cities that are decades, if not centuries old, we can always look at what our practices are, and whether or not we need to make change. We did have two women on the planning commission, and the one lady stepped down, and we went through a process. So I don't think by adding additional people for a specific reason is enough to add two additional people, because what is the mechanism behind that? In theory, we have one planning commission per district, and at-will from the mayor. So if we was to add two people, would that mean we would have one per district and three at-will for the mayor? Would that be the mechanism? You know, even though Elk Grove is very diverse, the planning commission is a commission that sets for a period of time, so they get up to speed to where they need to be. You just don't show up and raise your hand and move tables and chairs around for the day. There's a lot of work involved, there's a lot of thought process, it takes a lot of commitment. That doesn't mean that other people can't do that, it just means, is that what we want to do? Personally, I don't see the difference between five or seven. The difference to me is, what is the mechanism to get to that seven? What are we going to do, and how is it going to work? We just can't add two people that look a certain way. I just don't think that's the proper way of doing it. Or add another woman when we had two women on the planning commission. But I do think, as time goes on, we need to make sure that we're adding the proper person for the proper appointment, meaning, we just can't add somebody because they look a certain way. What is their qualifications? What is their commitment? Well, you know, I don't sit on certain things because I don't fit, I don't feel like I fit that position. So I come up here and speak as a citizen, but there's nothing wrong with not looking at it, and it might be something we may wanna table and look at as time goes along, but I'm really concerned is what would be the mechanism? How would it look, and how would it work? And I think that would get us to where the future would be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Seeing no additional speakers signed up, I want to close public comment. Council deliberation and direction, members, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Having been a planning commissioner, I can attest to what was just said by several of the speakers, as far as the responsibility and the workload and the diligence required in performing the duties appropriately. I will also say that I think there is tremendous value, perhaps more so on the planning commission than in any other city commission, in institutional memory, and having recollection as to why things were put into place, how they came to be the way that they are, the thinking at the time, what has transpired since then, et cetera, et cetera, so that you can weigh all of those things when these different decisions are being put before you. So that being said, I would not be in favor of term limits, per se, because I think they're just arbitrary, and take somebody out who may be doing a fine job, and then you lose that institutional memory of that person who was perhaps willing to continue to serve. The other thing that I'm not in favor of is expanding the planning commission just for expansion's sake. When you have a deliberative body, obviously, you know, the majority is what sways the decision, so three of the five, four of the seven, five of the nine, et cetera. The more unwieldy you make that process, I think you're just adding to the burden of government and the approvals process. So I see, I don't see that having extra two members, as was mentioned, just to check certain boxes is necessarily doing the process any favors. So I would say, though, that the last time that we had the opportunity to fill a position on the planning commission, I believe there were several candidates put into nomination that were female, that were of color, and that ultimately did not get the position. So I would say that the snapshot of what the planning commission looks like right now is not indicative of a flaw necessarily in the process. However, I would say if you want to make a change, so that I think there is a better representation geographically of the city, and also so that it goes back to having some sort of time for check-in for reaffirmation, I suggest we go back to the old system, whereas each council member and the mayor appoint their own planning commissioners, and those commissioners serve at the same term as that elected body, or that elected office.
Aye.
Council?
Yeah, John, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that contradictory to general law?
So, not general law, but with an elected mayor, under state law, the, well, I guess the general law with an elected mayor, under state law with an elected mayor, the mayor makes all appointments with the approval of the council. What I suppose you could do, but it wouldn't be binding in any way on this mayor, any future mayor, is you could have sort of a informal agreement that the mayor would respect that process, but under state law, the mayor would have the opportunity to appoint, subject, of course, to approval of the council, that's the check and balance.
That is not what Mr. Lindgren's table suggests. He has several instances where there is an elected mayor, and the method of appointment is the council.
Well, some of those may be charter cities. Well, some of those may be charter cities. Some of those may be simply in conflict with my opinion of the law. There is certainly the possibility where cities follow a process which conflicts with my opinion of the law. But we can pull it up and take a look at it. Just because they're doing it doesn't necessarily mean it's legal.
So to continue with-
And just because it's legal doesn't necessarily mean that it's right.
Well, that's true.
We just proved that on the last item. So the, I support the five-member board. You know, I mean, it's worked well. I mean, and I agree, I had some of the similar notes that Vice Mayor Hume had, that, you know, the institutional knowledge. These are all basically volunteer positions. And we've got some phenomenal people that have sat on there for several years and they bring that institutional knowledge and I would hate to see them term out. So I don't believe term limits. Term limits is, in my opinion, kind of a double-edged sword. If you've got somebody who's really good and they term out, it's unfortunate. If you've got somebody who's really bad, at least that's a way they go off, they're termed out. We also have the ability, if the majority of the council with the mayor wanted to remove somebody, if we were unhappy with the work that they were doing, we could do that. We've never done that, but that would, that's one way if we felt there was somebody who was not serving what we felt was in the best interest of the city and the council. We've shown that we've had normal attrition over the last few years. I think, Jason, I don't know if you know the numbers off the top of your head, but I think three of the five commissioners are four years or less, five years or less?
Correct. We have two commissioners that have had, that are longer terms, but most of it starting with-
So we've had, we've had three turnovers in the last five years. So that's, you know, that's the majority of the commissions turned over. And then again, you know, I've been very adamant about qualifications. I don't care what the color of somebody's skin is or whether they're man or woman. I appointed Sparky Harris back when I became elected in 2008. I didn't, I didn't put Sparky on here because he was black. I put him here because he was the most qualified person. And there was a relationship that I built with him. I knew him from outside of the city and got to know him and his expertise. He's a planner for the city of Sacramento. I mean, he was a perfect candidate to bring in. You know, and the only downside is sometimes when people have that great of institutional, not institutional, but that type of background, as a staff person, sometimes they come in and they have to find that balance between being an appointed person and being a staff person. Because they're so used to delivering and making decisions as a staff member. But I think the system works well. I mean, I previous, I do like the old system we had where every, every council member was appointed one person. But unfortunately, we don't have that system now, based on at least my understanding and what I'm hearing from John, that the general law city doesn't allow us to do that any longer. So it, and even with Jason's presentation, I think it's almost, the way it's worded is the commissioners are appointed by the mayor. Really, they're recommended by the mayor and then ratified by the entire, the majority of the council. But if they don't get recommended by the mayor, there's no vote for that person. So, you know, really, our, you know, as far as the other four council members, we're limited to what's presented before us from the mayor. Mayor?
I'm in favor of keeping it at five as well, too. As I look at what we have now, we have somebody representing every district. And as we move towards by district, and if we add two more members, then at least right now, we have two individuals that are representing District Three. If you add two more individuals, you're going to have at least one district that's going to be by themselves in here. So I think this is a fair representation. I will ask if, instead of having term limits, if we can have terms. So maybe having them reapply again after three years and having us take a, take a look at that. Because that gives us an opportunity to look at new applicants and that also gives us an opportunity to visit the individual that is currently on the commission. But, you know, I'm in favor of keeping it at the five-member commission as it is. I'm, I'm okay whether we do the term or not, but I think if we did do the term, whether it's three years, four years, two years, I think that just gives us an opportunity to look at new applicants.
Yeah. Well, there, there's a couple of things. I mean, I, when I first saw this, I was, I was pretty intrigued by the, as Vice Mayor Hume mentioned, the five council members appointing one and then two more were nominated by a majority of the council. I thought that was, that was a, some, you know, some of these cities have that, I thought that was pretty unique. I was disheartened, though, when I found out that, you know, it's a general law city, so we can't change the process. But I'm holding out hope that I heard John say, we could act this way in an informal manner if, if the mayor and everybody was willing, where we actually did do all five of us appoint and then we would have two at large or we would, you know, do a majority. The other option is, because I see this mixture in here, is if anybody's interested in talking about charter city, bringing it back and talking about all, a bunch of things. So I know two council members on here before had some once-been-twice-shy things of that, but I'm, nonetheless, I mean, I see this on here and, you know, we're, if we're limited by the general law, then, you know, just, this is conversation. So I'm just seeing what people are thinking.
Well, I certainly don't want to rule out the possibility of charter, right? I mean, that's, it could be long-term. I think my biggest thing is I've, I've never been a fan of term limits, term limits, and this is the reason why. And the Vice Mayor brought this up, we need folks that have some institutional knowledge. And I think that's so critically important for our city. But to balance that, I also struggle with the fact that we currently have lifetime appointments. In order to remove somebody, you know, we have to impeach them. And we have to take them before a city council and pick out exactly why we're impeaching them, either due to attendance or what have you. I think it's not, I don't want to go in that direction because it's not, it's just not nice. And I think that when you have people who are volunteering their time to serve in a commission and a city board, I think it's important for us to honor their time. And when it comes time for them to, to reevaluate, we also give them a chance for them to bow out in the event that they're saying, you know what, maybe this is not a good fit for me. So I like the fact that we assign terms to them. We can certainly alternate. Council members are vetted every four years. The mayor is vetted every two years. Currently, our system, the planning commissioners, are not vetted at all. And if we want to remove any one of them, we have to drag them out and embarrass them in public.
Actually, I don't think that's true. John, isn't it, aren't they at-will?
They are, but it would take council action to remove them.
Right. I mean, you don't have to give reason.
That's correct. Yeah, they serve, they serve at the pleasure of the council. They can be removed at any time. So they don't have a set term, they just are removed whenever they resign or the council removes them.
Thank you for the service.
Yes.
Right. But, you know, my point here is soften that a little bit more and to be consistent with other cities within the region, not only that, cities of the same size, they have terms where they're the only one who don't. And so I would, you know, certainly have an interest in, in adding terms to them. And I think that by virtue of statute, it should mirror a two-year term, consistent with the, the mayor that appoints. But I would advocate for alternating it so that we would have opportunities to keep institutional knowledge on the planning commission. Now, with the argument of diversity and inclusion, I've heard from a number of folks, including the chair of the planning commission, there is an interest to have a body that is inclusive, that looks like the city. I think that's important for, for all of us. Now, we're a little bit different because we're vetted by, by the voters. I think that for a planning commission that is appointed, we need to observe that and pay close attention. And if the, the community is telling us that we need to include diversity, I think it's important for us to consider it. And I will be open to a seven-member, I don't think it hurts us. I think it actually enhances us and provides us an opportunity to hear more from the residents. But I don't see it as a, as a negative. You know, this is an opportunity for us to, to see how we can bring more folks to the table.
I would be open to a seven-member and reapplying, not term limits, per se, but under the situation I, I described, which would be an informal, but agreement, but the matter of practice we would do.
Yeah, I was, I was going to highlight that a little bit. I think by practice, I listen to the council members and, and try to balance it out. And so by practice, we already have that in place. My, my thing here is to be responsive to the community members who've, you know, sent emails to us and who have called us. And, you know, to, to bring more folks to the table. So that's where I stand.
Mayor?
Uh huh.
I got a question actually for Jason. I believe if I'm not correct, we went through this whole scenario in 2012 and finally came up with, every election cycle, we send a letter to all commission and committee members to make sure they're still interested in staying on in their position. Isn't that correct?
I think that's where we landed. So the question was, I think we've discussed the concept of terms for office. And where we've landed to date is that instead of terms, we reach out to them after we do. And typically, it's on the mayoral election years, we reach out in December and find out if they still have an interest to continue to serve.
So that, I think that's what we had landed on previously, rather than put term limits on, is we, we get an interest check-
Yeah.
-to make sure, because we didn't want to be disrespectful to all the volunteers.
So, and I hear that Councilmember Detrick, I think one of the things that I'm after is providing an opportunity for people to apply and be vetted. I think that's real key, you know? To have, to have a courtesy ask, do you want to continue? I think that's important, too. But I would like an opportunity for them to submit their application again and to provide an opportunity for other members of the community to submit application. I like the current planning commission. I think that they provide very valuable support to, to the effort that we do. I would not be an advocate of removing anyone on the planning commission. I'm just looking for an opportunity to diversify and to be more inclusive.
So if I can kind of read the tea leaves, I think you've, you've got concession on implementing terms, but not on expanding the, the number.
I would also add that if we could do terms, each council member selects their individual and gets to decide whether or not they want to keep them or find another replacement.
That's what we just went over. It's not legal the way that's set up.
Yeah, but we, but, but the attorney says we could do it if-
But it's not binding, it's not binding.
Huh? It's not binding, but, I mean, you know, as long as we're working together, I think you would honor that.
I don't think I'm going to oppose, you know, a recommendation from your council district. I think as a courtesy of, of respect, I would honor that.
So with five, we each get to pick somebody from our district? And then there's the mayor's choice?
Well, yeah, that would, yeah, he'd be one of the five. And then if we wanted to do seven, then we would, the majority, okay.
So keep it at five, but add terms, not term limits.
Not term, not terms, but reapply.
Reapply, yes.
But it's the deference of the, of the districts, you know?
Yeah, and, and I think I would, I would recommend to be consistent with state law, to mirror with the mayor's term, which is a two-year service term. And then at that point, we can reevaluate whether, the seats alternating, of course, whether there might be other applicants who's interested and then move from there.
How do you alternate the seats if they're all two-year terms?
Well, I mean, we can, you know, pick two, three right now and then in another two years, pick another two, right? So there's five seats.
But those three that you pick right now would be up in that two years as well.
Correct, right.
So eventually, they're all going to cycle together where all five are up every two years.
Unless you did it every year. That's the only other way I could think of it. You could do four years. If you did a two-year term, then you're, you're making a selection of two or three every year, right? So if you did a two-year term, you had odd years, even years.
But you wouldn't necessarily have them coincide with election years.
They, right. Under that scenario, they would not coincide with election years. But, I mean, I don't think you can have it both ways where you have staggered terms and coinciding with election years. I think you'd have to do one or the other. And I think both of those have advantages and disadvantages. If they run with election years, then you run the risk of having a whole new planning commission every two years, which goes against the institutional knowledge issue. If you staggered them, then you're selecting either three or two or whatever number's up every year. So I guess, or you could do a four-year term or something different.
Yeah, if you did a four-year term, then every election, mayoral election cycle, you'd have either two planning commission or three planning commissioners up.
So having mirror our seats, basically.
So we have, as Councilman Detrick had, had reviewed, we have that process where we check in with them? And that's on an annual basis, right?
No.
No? Is that every two years? Is that every election?
Every election, correct.
I see. Yeah.
So it's currently a two-year basis.
I mean, you know, I don't, I don't sure if you were on, I don't think you were on the council at the time. We went, we went through this in a huge deliberation and that's how we ended up with, because one, personally, to every two years to have to reapply, I think is, is almost a little bit insulting to ask them to reapply for their job, especially if somebody's been doing well. Again, we've had attrition on all of our boards. Almost all of 50%, of the boards turn over about every five to eight years. And so I think attrition is, is the way to capture it, not with term limits. That's just my opinion. And I won't support term limits.
Yeah, Mayor, I, and I think, so I'm, I'm still on not terms, but reapply. And in your, in the case of yours, since you're up every two years, it's, I think it's your prerogative, you don't, it could be a four, if we just mirror, it might be, if we do four years, it mirrors our districts, it's alternating. And with yours, you could just decide whether you want them to reapply or not. I mean, it's your appointment anyway. So whether they do a four years or, you know, so you could just, we could just all be four years and, you know, go from there.
So I want to understand what you're saying. So everyone would be four years, but one planning commission would be two years?
No, 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 no. He has the prerogative, it's, because the mayor seats up every two years.
To a point, not to remove. So, so removal requires the, an action of the council, right? So they wouldn't just be up unless you imposed a term on that that would be up. So once they're seated, they're seated by the mayor with the consent of the council, but to remove them, it takes majority action of the council, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
So I'm not exactly sure I'm understanding what you're saying unless, what I thought you said, but it sounds like you're not, is that one seat would be a two-year term, four would be a four-year term, which, yeah, you're saying, no, you don't want that.
I know. I was, I'm still on the, this is-
I think understood what you-
We're, we're operating informally and it's like, I wasn't thinking removals, I was only thinking, I was only thinking appointment and operations.
Right, I get that. But once, once they're on, you know, say a new mayor comes on and he or she doesn't like the planning commission, then they can all be removed by majority of the council.
Yeah.
Yeah, but if, if you're setting up where they have to reapply every two years or every four years, you're basically saying, you're fired, reapply, and if we choose you again, then you'll get to stay. If not, we'll get some girls.
That's right. That's effectively a term, right? So if, if you, in four years, you say, I may select you, I may not, you have to reapply or I'm going to select someone else. That's effectively a term. Which is different than a term limit, of course, that would be a term.
Right.
So I don't support a term because I don't like that, that type of, again, it's a volunteer position, the institutional knowledge that goes along with it, and we've already seen with normal attrition.
Okay, so where are we at? You keeping tallies?
I think I would, I don't know that it requires a motion, but I, if we could just do a straw poll, I think we keep it the way it is.
I'll second that.
And not, and not even for the, not even for the appointments, like each one appointing their own? Just everything exactly the same?
Yeah, because as the mayor said, he, he pretty well puts it out there and gets our consensus for every appointment anyway. And we try and do a pretty good job of balancing-
Well, I mean, that's not, that's not how it happens. So, I mean, I don't want to relive the past, but that's not how it happened for my planning commissioners. So I just, you know, if, if that's true going forward, that's fine, but I'm just saying, if, I, I, so I think we're nuance, a little nuanced here. I'm saying, you know, we actually operate in a way that we, you know, choose it. But if, if it's, everything's just status quo. I mean, I'll, I'll look to the rest of the council first. If everybody wants to stay, stay-
But part of status quo is because of the- But part of status quo is because of the way the law is written.
Yeah, I know.
So, I, I mean, to have something that's non-binding, I mean, yeah, that's a gentleman's agreement, but in, you know, if one of us or three of us are gone in a two years or a year, then those gentleman agreements, they, they really don't mean anything, it's whatever's legally binding. And I, I think the system, as clunky as it is, it, it works, and I, I think we're working as well as we can within the system. So my recommendation is still second to Vice Mayor Hume's, to keep things the way they are.
So I'd just reiterate, I support term, not term limits, so that there's a regular rotation, and...
Then that is a term limit.
No, it's not, because I, a term limit excludes somebody from running ever or being in that position ever again. I don't support that. What I support is regularly alternating, to be consistent with other cities in this region, other cities of our size, to be consistent with duly-elected individuals like us who's consistently vetted by the people. Our current system is a lifetime appointment, and unless they're Supreme Court justices, I can't support that.
Okay.
So, okay, anything else?
So, so the term would mirror us, so it'd be four years, so for instance, Ms. McKenzie Weiser would mirror my term on the council, right? So if I'm up in 2022, then she's up in 2022 as well, too.
And I'm open to that, right.
And then I would be able to select who I wanted, should she want to reapply again or not, I would get to select who I wanted to occupy that seat.
Right, I think that's fair.
I got a question for Vice Mayor Hume, how many years do you believe it takes for a planning commissioner to be fully up to speed?
Totally incumbent on their background and what they're bringing to the table.
But, average person? Two years, four years, six years?
I'd say within two.
Okay, so basically, by the time they get up to really, or full running speed, we're asking them to reapply again.
Right.
I, I don't think that, my opinion, that's wrong.
But then I would get to, if that person is who I selected and they're reapplying again, I get to continue their appointment.
If the, if the mayor agrees to that...
Yeah, that's the problem, yeah, that would be...
So what I'm saying, you guys are trying to cram rules in that are non-binding, and with people that may not be here in one year, three years, five years.
So back to my original premise here, and in looking over the table, initially, I was not making the distinction between general law and charter. However, in looking at the table with that distinction in mind, Escondido, general law city, elected mayor, council appoints planning commissioners.
I can dive in more and find out how their processes and how they've gone back in the years, but I think it's by, there's law, and then there's practice of what agencies do.
So let me see if I can chime in a little bit, so I did look up the Escondido Code while the council was discussing this, and what the Escondido Code says is that the planning commission has seven members who shall be appointed by the city council. So it's not the model that you were suggesting, Vice Mayor Hume, where each council member gets to select it. Now, I suppose, to be consistent with state law, the way that ordinance would have to be interpreted is it's going to be similar to the way this council selects its planning commissioners, where effectively, the city council approves that. Now, there's a process where that's done, where the mayor makes the appointment subject to approval by the council, which is, in a general sense, an approval by the council. Now, I don't know exactly how Escondido does that in practice, but if they're going to be following state law with an elected mayor, then they would have to have the mayor essentially being the person throwing out the names, and the council approving them. Now, the practice here has been generally a little less formal than that, and when the council selects planning commissioners or any members of commissions or, or committees, at least with the current configuration of this council, there seems to be a dialogue and a building of consensus on that. If a future mayor decides not to honor that consensus and just throws out names, then the council would be struck, stuck with those names. But the code for Escondido simply says that the city council would appoint, so I'm not exactly how, how they implement that in practice, so it doesn't seem to provide for what we were contemplating a moment ago of the city council members appointing their own person, as we did once before.
And I would imagine it would be too deep in the weeds or too hard to discern how each of these agencies deal with whether or not commissioners have terms?
Terms and term limits would be, often those are codified, and so those are items that we could pull up, if you wanted to see terms and term limits.
Okay, then, in order to kind of put a bow on this thing, I think, hold on, okay, I think the council is saying that we want to keep it at five, that we're willing to entertain the idea of terms, but not term limits, so maybe can we have this item brought back with how these other cities deal or don't deal with terms?
Certainly, and I think what you'd see is the, for a lot of them, they will mirror when it is council, there'll be two- or four-year terms, or there'll be two-year terms based, or two- or four-year terms based on the directly elected mayor.
I want to try this one more time, because I, because Mayor, I take you at your word, you know, if we operated in, in a way, this would, there would not be the, the case of we can't vote on a candidate unless you put the name forward, it would, it would then be deferred to the districts, the representatives to, you know, you would put the name forward in, in the procedure, but you would, you would look to our respective seats.
And I'm fine with that, I think that by practice, I've, I've done that, I think it's important for us to collectively support the planning commissioner, and that's always been an interest of mine, so, yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay, so Vice Mayor, I think you did a good job of summing it up, we're all good with that, so bring it back.
Bring back, going into terms, not term limits, and just see how that pairs up. I think the distinction that'll be there is whether there are terms that are established under the directly elected mayor, or whether it's this issue where you're going to see it tracking with council appointments, and it goes along with the terms of council members or elected officials, so, but we'll bring that back.
And do we need to put in, right, like, codify the, at the deference to the respective council districts?
I think that'll be a discussion once we see how...
I think that might be discussion for when we bring this back, so that's a concept that's out there, in terms of how codifying that would probably be difficult.
Yeah, right.
Well, it's just, you can codify whatever you want to, but it's not binding.
I understand, thank you.
All right, excellent, let's adjourn the meeting at 9:13.
Thank you.
Thank you.